Mr. Chair, we're live.
Well, good evening. Um, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Balden Park Planning Commission of four September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five at seven oh one. If you're able to, please stand for the flag salute. Great, thank you all. Planning Secretary, will you please um call roll?
Yes, good evening. Uh Chair Pena.
Present.
Commissioner Escobosa.
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Miranda De Zeeb.
Present.
Thank you.
Oh, and may uh may the record reflect that um the Vice Chair uh is vacant.
Thank you. Onto verbal communications, I now declare verbal communications open. Anyone wishing to address the commission on anything other than the items listed on the agenda may come to the podium, take a number, and we will call speakers in numerical order. Uh of course, we will be restricting your comments to a maximum of three minutes. So any wishing, anybody wishing to speak, please come to the podium. Seeing no further interest, I now declare verbal communications closed. Um now, onto the consent counter. The lone item on the consent counter is the meeting minutes from the previous planning commission meeting. Would any commissioner like to pull this item? Seeing none, I do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty, uh June twenty fifth of two thousand and twenty five of the consent counter?
I motion.
Good question. Motion to approve. Sure, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Is there, do I have a second?
I'll second.
That in mind, can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Pena.
Yes.
Commissioner Escobosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda De Zeeb.
All abstain. I was absent on that uh meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Onto public hearings. The only case on the agenda is the request for consideration of a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from commercial industrial to park space, a zone change from industrial commercial to open space and a design uh review for the construction of a new approximate nine thousand square foot pocket park, the Anna Montenegro Park located in um the uh APN uh eight five three six dash zero one six dash nine zero two. Planning staff, may you please have a presentation?
Yes, thank you. Uh IT, can you please queue it up? Thank you. As residents of the city, I'm sure you're all aware that the city of Balden Park is deficient in parks and open space. Balden Park has zero point three acres of park space per one thousand residents compared to the county average of three point three acres per thousands, per thousand residents. Public parks offer recreational opportunities, benefits, uh they benefit the community health and wellness, and provide aesthetic beauty and enjoyment. Because of these benefits, the city is committed to finding opportunities to expand existing parks, trails, and finding opportunities to create parking uh pocket parks. Which is why I'm pleased to present to you the city's proposal for a brand new park named Anna Montenegro Park. This pocket park is approximately nine thousand square feet in size on land that is vacant and is located in the northwest corner of Main Avenue and Joan Bridge Street. The current the current land use of the property is industrial and the current zoning is industrial commercial. And it is bordered by an auto repair use to the north, a water utility to the south, a single-family residence to the west, and light industrial uses across the street to the east. The property was acquired by the city in April two thousand and twenty two using Quimby and community enhancement funds for the future use of park as park space. The Recreation and Community Services Department brought acquisition of the the property before the city council on April sixth, two thousand and twenty two, and share the conceptual design of the park to the city council on February fifth, two thousand and twenty five. The feedback received from the city council at those meetings was incorporated into the project scope. Next slide. The park celebrates pre-Columbian artistry and incorporates quality design wherever possible. Improvements such as colorful place uh cover a colorful place surface, a play structure, swing set, and play climbers will be installed for the kids to play on. Shade sails, a decorative shade structure, and five shade trees will will add relief from the sun and the elements and providing, provide a relaxing environment for all. A men and women's restroom building will be built on the west side of the park. A ten-foot block wall will be constructed along the park's north and west boundaries to provide visual and noise screening for the adjacent properties. A decorative three-foot wall and eight, eight-foot tall uh steel pickets atop will be placed along the south and east edges of the park. There will be a pedestrian gate that will be closed at sunset to securely close the park at night. Additional amenities will include benches, seating boulders, a bike repair station, a drinking fountain, decorative seat walls, trash receptacles, solar-powered security lighting, and a camera system, and a monument sign. No off-street parking is provided with this proposal. Next slide, please. This project is proposed on a lot with a land use designation of commercial industrial and a zoning designation of industrial commercial. The land use and zoning must be changed to accommodate the public park, and both the land use and zone change require the the following findings. That the amendment is consistent with all of the goals, policies, and objectives of the general plan. The amendment will not adversely affect the surrounding properties. The amendment promotes public health, safety, and general welfare, and that the amendment serves the goals and purposes of the zoning code. On that first one, which is the, that the amendment is consistent with the goals and policies and objectives of the general plan. The project is consistent with goal three, uh which is for the provision of revitalization, uh deteriorating land uses and properties, and that is because they will develop a vacant lot currently that's um it's just uh characterizes, it's just plain dirt, and will convert it into a thriving park space. The park is also consistent with urban design element of the general plan that calls for the beautification of street frontage through landscaping, lighting, and community amenities near the gateways of the city. Lastly, the project is consistent with the goals of uh goals for mini parks, also called pocket parks, in the general plan. And it is located on a street corner, and it is designed for safety and security, and it will be regularly serviced by city employees, all of which is in support of that uh land use element. Or sorry, element of the general plan. The second, the second one is the amendment um, the amendment will not adversely affect the surrounding properties. Parks are widely accepted by the community as amenities that benefit to the the area that they serve. So the expectation of a park, additional park space on the subject law is a positive, and it will be a positive effect on the surrounding properties. Efforts taken to provide appropriate security measures such as lighting and security cameras ensure a safe environment. Limiting park use to daytime only further secures the site and protects the site against potential nuisances. And the next goal was that, or the next finding is that the the amendment has to promote public health, safety, and general welfare. The city of Balden Park is underserved in terms of park space and all new park areas where uh residents and visitors can recreate and enjoy natural amenities supports the general where welfare of the city. And the la, that last finding is that these amendments have to serve the goals and purposes of the zoning code. Uh the project i- is proposing an amendment to the zoning for the property to be open space, uh which will comply with the the proposed park space uh land use that's proposed for this project. Next slide, please. Just a quick note here, there's a typo on the slide. The heading should be the design review findings and not what's written there. As far as the design review findings, the project, the project site is fenced with chain-link fence and is unimproved with simple dirt and uh some scattered vegetation. The the proposal is to develop the site into a vibrant park space for the community to enjoy. The design also reflects the community's vision for the space, fostering a harmonious blend of history, culture, and education. The overall design incorporates culturally rich elements such as a tower-like play structure inspired by an Alabrija serpent, a rubberized flooring with pre-Columbian, pre-Columbian pa- patterns, walls with Talavera pottery designs, and a shade structure uh with a design inspired by Papel Piccolo. The only building uh proposed on the property is a five hundred square foot restroom building, and that will have Spanish architecture to mash, match the Spanish-influenced design of the park. The project meets the required findings for design review um as detailed, further detailed in the staff report. In in regards to CEQA, the CEQA finding for this project, uh a a draft initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared to identify potential site-specific environmental constraints associated with the Balden Park and a Montenegro project. The draft in- initial study determined that the project could result in potentially significant impacts following the uh environmental topics of biological resources, cultural resources, energy, geological soils, noise, and tribal resources. Since all the potentially significant impacts could be fully mitigated, the project qualifies for mitigated negative declaration, and therefore does not require the preparation of an environmental impact report or CEQA. Next slide, please. In conclusion, it is recommended that the planning commission approve the following resolutions in support of Anna, the Anna Montenegro Park project, recommending that the city council approve uh uh the approval of the general plan amendment, zone change and in design review and adoption of the initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that presentation, Nick. I know it's been a long time getting to this point, so I appreciate your staff um um and the rest of the department working on this um um report. Um are there any questions? Um alright, I'm, we're the, oh, uh not yet. We'll, we'll go and open up a public hearing in a few moments. Uh so first of all, we're gonna have the commission ask any questions to staff.
Um I do have a couple of questions, and I apologize if you already covered this. Um but as with any park, there's gonna be people that are driving towards the location to access the resources. Was there any conversation or mention about how many parking spaces would be created for this?
So there are no uh parking spaces proposed with the project, given that it's a, it's a, it's a very small site, you know, and a pocket park. Um no, no parking was provided.
And then um my my last question then would be, um I know that the city has taken a lot of measures, maybe currently still taking a lot of measures um to create some water sustainable um systems in the larger parks. Is there any conversation about that taking place with these smaller pocket parks?
Yes, uh this, this project will be subject to a low-impact development, and will incorporate those uh design elements in support of that requirement into um the project design. Most of that, most of that, you won't, it'll be there, you won't even see. So that'll be um a lot, a lot of pervious soil. There's gonna be drought-tolerant landscaping, and then there, there will definitely be uh elements that are designed to retain stormwater on-site.
Thank you.
And then, Nick, do you mind clarifying? Are you also considered the applicant at this point, or are you, in, in what capacity is it?
Presenting on behalf, so I would say the applicant is uh the city's um Recreation and Community Services Department, but presenting on behalf of the city.
So we can ask you questions in the capacity as plant-city planner, but also in the capacity of the applicant?
Yes.
Roman, did you have any questions? I know you're an expert in parks and rec.
Um I know you mentioned, or mentioned some of them a little bit in the report. Could you elaborate more on the safety measures, lighting? Mentioned the fence and then hours of operation?
Yes, yeah, happy to do so. Um there will be lighting. Um uh there will be lighting for safety, pedestrian uh pedestrian level uh safety. Uh there's gonna be cameras, a camera system there that will be able to be monitored uh remotely. So that's a great uh benefit that um both for city staff, for, for ease of um monitoring and ensuring safety. Um perhaps the biggest safety measure, I would say, is the limiting of park hours. So it's gonna be open during the day, and it's going to be closed at night. And so this is an important uh point to stress, because many parks are officially closed at night, but have no way to um keep people out or to really, to really secure the site. This will be a fully fenced park. So there'll be walls on two sides, and then it'd be fences on two sides. And um so at, at sunset, those, those fences are going to close. There'll be no way to get into the park. So that will um, that will do, will go the farthest, I would say, to protect um the site from becoming any sort of nuisance where people are hanging out when they shouldn't be there.
Um and two more questions, real, real simple, though. Um would this be considered an uh passive park, or would there be programming there?
I would say it's um, it's, I would say it's somewhat active, um because it has um play equipment, it has features to to draw people in, opposed to a passive park, which you might find landscaping and trails, so.
And the last question is because I'm in the parks and recreation business.
Yes.
You had a small new park. Is it, will it be pet-friendly, or would there be a limitation on pets inside the park?
Ah, it's a good question. I, I don't know the answer, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um couple of questions uh when reviewing the report. Um I, I know as part of this report, um or sort of when we make these types of um projects, was there any feedback from the community? I know that Parks and Rec had sort of a listening tour, um but as far as just the notices and so forth, were there any um feedback from, from the, the local residents on this?
Uh in response to the notices? No.
Notice, okay.
No.
The other question I have is, I know this was being funded by grant funding, so I'm curious from the point of view of Parks and Rec or even just the uh larger um administration of the city, um is there gonna be, what is the sustainability for the funding to ensure that the security measures, as well as the maintenance of the park um are maintained over a, a long term versus what the grant funds are intended for?
It's a good question, and often one that's difficult to, 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 to fully get around, because it does require projection of funding. Uh so, so Quimby fees are, so it's one of the contributing funding sources for the development, and that's Quimby's, Quimby fees are received when there's other, other developments going on. Everyone pays into um purchasing a pro, uh park space. So that's a part of what goes to the initial funding, and then there was another source as well. But I think you were, you, what you're getting at is for the operations and maintenance.
Correct.
There may, so that part is um, I think it's to be determined. I mean, the, the assumption is that uh general funds will go, go towards the operations and maintenance of this small park, and uh city staff will, will, will use our existing resources to cover it. But that isn't to say that uh future grants couldn't be obtained, but to uh to supplement the costs or, or partially go towards paying for the operations and maintenance.
Thank you. And then I know Commissioner Escobosa brought up a really good point about parking. Um so I know when I look at the report, it implies that it is for folks who are walking or um or, or being on a bike. Um I recall when I was in one of sort of the listening tours, um they talked about having maybe sort of a bike station to repair and so forth. So my concern is still that there isn't parking. Um you know, are people parking on the street? You know, is there a create more density? Um I'm curious to see other pocket parks outside of the city of Balden Park. Um when looking into, you know, finally developing this, you know, were there any um adverse problems as a, you know, as a result of having no parking, or did it maybe discourage people from even it fully enjoying it, you know, rather than an active park? It was more sort of a passive park. So I'm really curious to see, you know, again, from the Parks and Rec point of view, um if this is gonna become sort of the serious issue where, you know, it's nice on paper, but in reality, nobody's going to just because, you know, that there's the accessibility part to it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely a, a good topic to bring up. Um parking is always great when you, we can provide it, because it does open the park up to, to more users than, than you would have if, if there was no parking. So as a pocket park and, and being so small, it's going to cater to your very local community. Folks that can walk to it, folks that can bike or take more um non-motorized transit, perhaps even bus. So that it, by not providing parking, you are gonna limit, that's just a, a, a reality of it. You're going to limit how many users from, that, that are gonna be driving and actually use the park. But I think as a pocket park, it is more intended for that, the more immediate community.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Um another concern of mine is the noise and the privacy. Um certainly, I know that there's sort of some efforts to, you know, sundown, let's close down the park. Is there um ensuring that there isn't any crime or so forth? Is there um any monitoring system, any official monitoring system aside from, you know, PD, you know, coming and just checking in on or code enforcement stopping by? Is there sort of an active monitoring system in place to ensure that, you know, the noise level is kept, you know, at, at a minimum? Or there is sort of a consistent feedback from the surrounding neighbors? Where, again, it's not some neighbor coming in to, to the second floor here and providing the feedback, and then, of course, they just take it and it just stays there. Is there sort of an active monitoring system in place to ensure that?
Well, the, the surveillance cameras will be there. So, so there's, in terms of monitoring, there'll be visual monitoring of uh, of the site, and that'll be uh around the clock, twenty-four seven. So that's, that's a big benefit, because that, not all parks have that.
And then will it be monitored twenty-four seven in real time, or?
Available. So the feed, the feed will, will never turn off. So the police department will have access to the feed. Um in terms of servicing and
Sorry, let, let me clarify. So the, the feedback, um it's, it's being recorded twenty-four seven, but it's not somebody at dispatch that has a monitor and is looking at the park. Is that correct?
I, I'm not sure of the detail of that, of um to what extent it's gonna be and how actively it be monitored, but it will be available to be monitored, monitored.
And then just the last question that I have is, um I know when there was the report, there were, again, sort of, I think, three factors or three um obstacles when looking at it. I think there was one sort of the burial, understandably. Um but the other one was the sort of the noise, the construction noise, as well as the potential of the, or is it the nursery for the birds? Um can you elaborate more on those? You, you know, pretty much the issue, but more importantly, how it's gonna be um tried to kept as a, a, to, to a minimum or mitigated?
Yeah, for um, of course. Um construction noise is always, it's, construction noise is always an issue for uh for any project. During construction, it's, it's unjust, it's anticipated that heavy machinery will be used, and every time you're using heavy machinery, whether it's for grading or moving dirt around, that's gonna, there's gonna be noise impacts. But uh the code does allow for that, given that it's temporary. And furthermore, there are um mitigation measures included in the, in the monitoring program that um require best practices be used. And as long as those best practices are used, I think um it should, it should be a good project. It should be, should be fine. I think you also mentioned um nesting from birds. So also, also with the, the mitigation measures there, is going to um it's gonna protect potential birds nesting in there, provided the mitigation uh measures are followed. You typically, those mitigation measures are that you don't um remove the vegetation where those nests might be during the nesting season. So you, you plan accordingly, accordingly.
And just the last question, the actual last question that I have now, um currently, it's just a dirt site, is that right? So had, how, how long has it, if you know the information, how long has it been a vacant lot?
I'm, I, actually, I'm not aware that it was developed, if, if it was developed before, yeah.
So it, and then the city recently purchased that lot, is that right?
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
Relatively recently.
A year ago or so?
I, I think it was two thousand and twenty-two.
Two thousand and twenty-two. So before then, it was still undeveloped um area. So, you know, I think just thinking out loud, and I'm a, you know, um putting words in your mouth or the city's mouth, but you know, if the city wouldn't have come in two thousand and twenty-two and purchased it, um present day, two thousand and twenty-five, going into two thousand and twenty-six, it most likely could have been sort of still a vacant lot, unless somebody else had purchased and developed it, right?
I suppose.
Yes.
If I may add to that, um I can the site based on its existing situation, because it's still in a signed APN, which is the assessor's parcel number or, or identification number, and no address has been issued, that leads to, to tell me that this site was never developed.
Yeah, good point.
Because if a site is developed, then the city, whether it's the planning department or our building and safety, would assign it a physical address to the site. That's why in the staff report, project site, it reference an assessor's parcel number versus an address. Because it was never developed as an official building or site that was utilized, whether prior to the city incorporation or during the city incorporation.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any additional questions?
Do, I have one last question, just out of curiosity. I did see in the report that um and I'm gonna try so hard to pronounce all these words correctly. The hereditary chief of the Kichi Nation, Gabriel Lino, band of Mission Indians reached out, asking for basically a sit-down to have um government-to-government conversations and consultation around this project. Do you know if that's taken place?
Yes, yeah. So we've uh, we've engaged in consultation with um with that tribe and offered, and offered mitigation measures with it.
Thank you.
Alright, uh seeing that there aren't any further questions uh to the commission, uh to staff by the commission, um I will now declare the public hearing open. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter, uh will have the opportunity to speak. Um please come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Before I have somebody, uh or members of the community, we do ask the applicant the opportunity to speak first for three minutes. So I know you've said a lot, Nick, but in this case, would you still like to have the opportunity? Um or anybody from your staff to speak?
No, we'll go ahead and yield to the, the audience.
Great, thank you. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and, again, open public testimony. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the podium. And one, you got to, please, yes, once you come to the podium, please say your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council members. My name is Laura Carmona. I'm here with my husband, Manuel Chavez. We're the residents that live right next to the empty lot. Um I can address one um point that you brought up was the parking. We've brought that up uh many times. When he said there was no input from the community, we've brought that up quite a bit. We've been here to the commit, to the meeting, the first meeting that they had. I addressed the mayor, she didn't address my concerns. I wrote her an email, still didn't address my concerns. So as far as the parking, I've let them know there is no parking. The street parking that's there now is overtaken by the businesses on Main Street. There's auto shops, mechanic shops, they come and they park all their cars there. So there'll be no parking for the park. We've let them know that, there is no parking. They fill up, both sides of the street is full with their cars from the auto shop. That's one issue that you brought up. So there, there'll be no parking for the park because they overtake all the parking that's there. We've mentioned it to them, why can't they make parking for the park? So there's spots for people that want to go to the park so they can park there. They said there, there just won't be no parking for the park. It's, it's curbside parking, street parking. So that's the answer that we got. As far as the surveillance, how do I know that? With the cameras, my privacy is not being invaded by those cameras. We're right next to an empty lot. That was one of our concerns. Yes, the cameras offer security, but what about our privacy? What about the foot traffic that's going to be coming by our house? What about that? We've addressed all these concerns to the mayor. I've written emails to the mayor, to the city manager. He's been very helpful. Because of the city mayor, I mean, the city manager, we got the 10-foot wall. Because they were going to just put a decorative fence right next to our property, which is, they're putting a seating area right next to our garage. So I was like, how is that going to affect our privacy if there is no wall? It was just going to be a fence, a decorative fence. So that brick wall was something that we fought for as the residents right next to that empty lot. That's one of my concerns too. I suggested speed bumps up and down the street because down Joan Bridge Street, cars drive very fast. I know because I jog every morning around the block and cars do not slow down. I'm going like this to them, they still don't slow down. There's an issue with the homeless in our neighborhood. I've brought that up. Every day, there's a new homeless in our neighborhood. Every day, I've sent pictures to the city manager. Every day, this is the homeless of the day. This park, I keep telling them, is going to attract the homeless, especially with the restroom. We've been telling them it's a very small area.
Thank you for your time, I do have to stop you there.
There's more issues. What's your name? I didn't catch your name.
My name is Eric Pena, just to clarify, we are commissioners, just a humble commissioners, not council members.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay with you, because you seem to be asking a lot of important questions that the mayor didn't even ask. He just approved the last layout.
You can send any questions to, to the city planner and the city planner will, will forward the questions to us or comments. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? You can state your name and then we'll.
Yes, great, great evening. My name is George and although I am for parks, I am concerned about like few things such as, you mentioned it is an industrial area. How are they going to benefit or how is the community going to, or? I'm not sure if it's the right place to place a pocket park when there's not enough residents, there's no parking car, they're going to travel there. Is there enough homes around or for people to use that park? Or is it just going to be a place for homeless to stay? Like if it's, if it's, there's not enough homes around that park, I don't think it's beneficial for that community to place a pocket park there. Other than that, yeah.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoke wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing that there aren't any further comments, I will now declare public hearing closed. With that in mind, I will either entertain a motion or of course, we can open up for deliberation. And of course, we can continue and ask questions to staff based off of the feedback that we've received from the community.
I do have one question regarding the cameras. That was an important point. How are we ensuring that the cameras are facing the park only and not the various residences surrounding the park?
So that, that would be one of the things that we'll take care to, to make sure we get right, that, that the cameras are only recording in the park area and are not going to be directed at neighboring properties.
And then, sorry, I thought that was the last question. I can't help, but as we're talking about this park, I can't help but think of another park, not quite a pocket park, but a fenced off park, Walnut Creek Park, which is a park that I am very familiar with because I do live in the area. And while it is fenced off, there have been concerns about people, you know, people can climb a fence and people find ways in. And there have been concerns in the neighborhood throughout the years about people camping out in the middle of the night. It's not people that necessarily live in the neighborhood. It's people who aren't doing, they're not engaging in legal behaviors and so. That does create a sense of, of a lack of safety. So wanting to bring that up, hoping that it's taken consideration as talking about cameras and talking about monitoring, live streaming, all of that.
Yeah, all good points. The perimeter barriers are not just your standard barriers. So it's, the walls are 10 feet tall. So that would, so that's, that's, that's quite a, quite a climb. If you, it's not, I wouldn't say it's impossible, but that's, that's, that's a difficult climb. And then on, on the south and west, which are the street facing sides of the property, you're looking at eight-foot tall fences or the eight ball, they call it pickets in the design. But that's, that's taller than your more typical five or six security fencing that you might see around schools. Eight, it's, it's quite tall. And then the last part about kind of hanging out there when, and, and doing things you shouldn't be doing. Keep in mind that this is going to be a, a place that's going to be surveilled easily by the police department. And you could ease, more easily do bad things someplace else because you, that, that surveillance is not there.
So just kind of a couple of thoughts that have been coming, and certainly this isn't a question. This is just more, you know, based off of hearing the feedback and also being part of this listening tour. You know, it's no secret that the city of Balden Park is park poor, there's a park equity gap. You know, when you go to the city of Walnut, there's plenty of greenery. But certainly when you come here, it is very, very dense and we hardly see, you know, that sort of green space that we also need here in the city. But certainly, when I look at kind of the pocket park, it does remind me a little bit about the SoCalo across the street. So certainly that looked good in paper. But to be perfectly honest, you know, even when there's an activity going on, I still see more people in Morgan Park because it's green. It's more central. There is parking in the SoCalo, there really isn't parking. Yes, you can park down here. You still have to cross the street and God willing, the cars do, do stop. It does pop, you know, when you're crossing, it's very, very busy. It does remind me, you know, when you talk about sort of the speed bump. So I am really torn on this. Again, it seems really great in paper. I think ideally for those who are living in the area, certainly can walk their dog, their bike and so forth. But I'm just wondering how much people will really, really benefit from this park? And will it be sort of another SoCalo where again, you see more cement rather than, than greenery? So, you know, it's still one of those things that I'm still torn about it. And certainly people, you know, in the feedback that we've received here, but also certainly the feedback that we've received and just sort of those listening tours conducted by the Parks and Rec Department. You know, it is still, I feel that in some cases, there are more cons to pros. However, just to play devil's advocate as well, you know, that's why I had asked the question before, what, what was there before there? You know, was there maybe a gym, you know, something that a community center, maybe a, a, a religious, a temple or, or anything like that? But again, because it was abandoned, it, you know, you solve an APN number, you don't have an address. You know, that means it's, it's been vacant obviously for a really long time. So I do see sort of this initiative from the city coming in, trying to do the good thing or trying to maybe do the best thing because certainly you can't do much without space. But certainly I can see, you know, that there are some cons to it. So I'm still torn, still certainly haven't made a decision. I know a decision still has to be made today, but I am really curious about feedback from my fellow commissioners about what their thoughts are on, on having this pocket park.
Just being a lifelong resident of the city of Balden Park, we have absolutely nothing, we say on the north side of Balden Park. We have nothing within walking distance. I believe the biggest green space in that area was Margaret Heath School, which has recently closed down. So as in terms of accessibility, there's absolutely nothing in that area other than the Santa Fe Dam. So within walking distance, again, if it's to serve a smaller neighborhood and maybe it doesn't have the big physical imprint like SoCalo or Morgan Park does, it will definitely benefit the children in the neighborhood. And because any green space, knowing how dense the city of Balden Park is, it is definitely going to be a benefit even just to escape the outside, sit outside, read outside, get some, it'll definitely benefit the community rather than it being a vacant lot, undeveloped. Maybe there's some zoning that could happen on the street with the parking, maybe temporary 30-minute parking that maybe to help get those cars that aren't supposed to be there out of there. Maybe that, that could help mitigate some of that, so keep people moving, don't keep them staying there all day. But I think it's definitely a benefit rather than a drawback.
I'd also like to say, I, I know there was at least three meetings at Morgan Park and they invited the community to come and speak and I went to two of those meetings. One thing that I did hear a lot was our elderly residents in the community don't have a safe space to walk. And so that the design of the park has a, almost like a circular path. So, you know, people wanted to walk. They would also, they also discussed the playground and so the materials for the playground and that the playground would be accessible for, for children who may have some sort of disabilities. So that's also something that I thought was, was pretty positive. And yes, it's not, it's a pocket park, it's not a Morgan Park. So it is going to, you know, in terms of comparisons, you, you can't really compare. But if you think, would you rather have a vacant lot or a nice, you know, pocket park? I think it's an improvement if there was something there that was better. And then we're changing it to a pocket park, that, that may be a different discussion. But in terms of the elderly residents and the children who can play at the park, I think that would, it seems like it'd be something positive for our city.
I do agree. From my perspective, this is not perhaps, in, in the way that it's currently designed, it's not perhaps the perfect answer or the complete answer. And so I do think that there are a few things that could be tweaked and improved. Overall, I do agree that aesthetically, as far as the usage of the land, a pocket park is an improvement from a vacant lot. I also am compelled to remind myself and maybe even my fellow commissioners that our job today is to vote on whether this project is meeting the regulations as, as they're established today.
Thank you for that feedback. And Commissioner Escobosa, not to put you on the spot, but you mentioned there were some tweaks or areas of improvement or growth. Could you list a couple of them or what did you have in mind?
I actually really like the idea that Commissioner Rodriguez, I miss everybody's last name, my apologies, that Commissioner Rodriguez put forward about some conversations on how to mitigate traffic and some additional steps that can be taken. I, I still remain concerned. I, I know a 10-foot wall seems impossible, but I thought it was 19 years old once upon a time, Nick, and I could climb a 10-foot wall, I could figure it out. And so I still remain concerned about, you know, making sure that the local residents feel comfortable, feel like we're not invading on their privacy. But just things like that.
Yeah, great, thank you. And then I know, Nick, yes, please.
I, I do want to give the commission and the audience a little bit more perspective with regards to this. I'm fairly new to the city. Been doing planning for over 28 years. Now, you have to look at kind of the bigger picture. This is a huge opportunity. It's really rare for a city to be able to acquire properties, small or big, and utilize that to generate proactive use that can be beneficial with the community, especially open space. There's a lot of struggle for many community to seek grants, grant funding, to purchase and acquire property for such open space. But the really, the bigger perspective in terms of land use. The city has been incorporated for over 60 years. And our anniversary date is coming up next year, being 70 years. So for over 70 years, and prior to that, it was an incorporated area of LA County. So for all these years, the site was never developed. And there was no opportunity for development or people choose not to develop for whatever reason. But keep in mind that the underlying land use, the underlying land use is industrial and commercial industrial. So modifying and changing and amending the land use to be less impactful. So just imagine if somebody were to come in and develop, they will be able to develop something very similar to the surrounding use to the north, which is industrial use, auto repair, auto body, manufacturing, so on and so forth. You think this is an impact? That is going to be much more of an impact in addition to the parking and spillover. I hear about the concern about parking and the city hear about that. In fact, earlier today, myself, the city manager and our code enforcement supervisor did an actual site visit, not just this site, but multiple sites around the area. Yes, we saw the concern with regards to the adjacent business operator across the street in terms of the parking impact, them pulling their vehicles and putting it on the street. We will address those. In fact, we will coordinate with our code enforcement team, our parking enforcement team and our PD to run the plates of the vehicles, make sure that the vehicles, if they're residents living in that community, that wouldn't be a problem. If vehicles that does not belong there, nor that belongs to the adjacent business that has to spill over onto the street and putting the burden on our city streets, we will address that, we will chalk it, we'll tag it and then we will tow it if need be. And in addition to that, we'll put the business owner on notice in terms of a business violation, the parking violation. So that way they're also fully aware and also be cognizant of the impact that they're creating on the community. A small pocket park like this, typically in many cities, we have the opportunity to apply for and purchase and acquire for open space and, and active park. That is a diamond in the rough and that's really rare. We wish for over 70 years that we have a developer that comes in and improve that site instead of it sitting vacant. I think the code enforcement team, our homeless outreach team, our PD, I think they're doing a great job. The worst case scenario, they see a vacant lot like this, our transients folks, they tend to squat there and we constantly have to remove them. And that's not the case here. That is, that, that's wonderful. That means we're doing something right because there are shopping centers. You see it at our plaza, prime location in our downtown, very heavily foot traffic and vehicle traffic area, has a pretty successful business from vodka, the juice place, the Vietnamese restaurant, Superior Market, El Pollo Loco, Dutch Bakery or the Dutch Cafe and all the other businesses. And we're looking to improve that. A lot of transients are there and we're working with the property owner and the management company to address those issue. This is, you know, fairly good, you know? And yes, there are additional impacts, there are, you know, some inconvenience with that. But the intent of the pocket park is to serve. But the intent of the pocket park is to serve the neighborhood, the community that is in need of that, in need of an open space, in need of an active space. So you have residents within the surrounding area that has children, that has elderly folks. Now they have a place that it could just walk to it and enjoy the space and get to spend time with the family, get to spend time to reminisce and relax. Um, and the ability for cyclists do to make a pit stop to get some rest, to use a restroom. And it becomes an active space. In this situation, it's a control active space. So I just wanted to share that information with Commissioner. If we have a a magic wand, there will be a development that would be in compliance with the existing underlying zone. But this opportunity that's uh, that was given to us, um, keep in mind, you know, for over seventy years of not being developed and the city had an opportunity to seek grant funding for the purpose of acquiring open space, public open space. That is really rare in many and and a lot of cities. From uh, not just in Southern California, but in California alone. So, um, I'm not here to really defend the project, the the project is a capital improvement project, the city is an applicant. There are many department and many division that's involved in this project. Our planning department is the face of the project since they are the agency or the department that is an expert in CEQA, an expert in land use entitlement. And but the project involves recreational and community services department, involves public works, involves administration, the city manager's office and city council's office, involves, of course, planning and community development. Along with this, there will be other division that we will be involved. Building and safety, so you know, public works in terms of storm drain, the county. Um, meeting the requirement of all the requirements set forth by the state and by the city is a process, so it's an undertaking. Um, so I just want to shine some light for the commissioners and for the audience tonight. Um, you know, the impact is pretty minimal, just imagine if an auto body or an auto repair shop come into the facility and create more impact, that would be worse than what it is uh, would be now.
Sure, thank tha- thank you for that insight. So what I'm hearing, it's sort of the lesser of two evils in in some cases prior to twenty twenty two. Um, so yeah, so so it certainly puts a lot of things in perspective. I still want to kind of go ahead and go back to Commissioner Escobosa's point um, about sort of that mu- much of sort of mitigation that also uh, Commissioner Rodriguez had also brought up with sort of the parking and traffic. Um, is that over the purview of the commission or is that more on the council, or is that sort of a separate avenue of of what um, our new community development director talked about where let's make mud be more a little aggressive with parking enforcement, code enforcement um, on that, so is that is that something that we can add on the on the resolution or do we have to take take your word for that?
It is within your rights to, because this is a recommendation that's in front of you today. Um, so one of the, one of the options that you have is to recommend approval, uh, if you will, uh, of of these resolutions with some additional notes for the city council for consideration, so we recommend approval with some cons- with and 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 some advice for the city council to consider adding a condition of approval. Um, as however you'd like to phrase it, whether it's the the thirty minute parking signs um, that you mentioned, Commissioner, or or another condition of approval that would be up up to you to come up with.
Um, would that also, I think we can also do speed bumps as well, is that right?
You can recommend, okay, yes.
Um, the other thing that I had a question was, I I knew that the there is the feedback there, and then I know this was also brought up with the commissioner about had asked about sort of the privacy and sort of the angle of the the cameras. Um, you know, I have mixed feelings with both sides because certainly there is a camera, you know, our our camera that's um, being recorded twenty four seven, but certainly there could be a Ring Door camera in front of their property as well, recording that, but as far as kind of just sort of the um, and I know said, you said that that would be actively worked on. Um, is that something else that needs to be sort of put, um, we we can add as far as notes as making sure that it's only within um, the scope or the view, I should say, of the park?
Yes, I believe so. If you'd like to add a condition of approval to clarify that point, um, whether that I mean, I mean, you, one suggested wording and feel free to make your own wording would be to a condition for um, city staff to to verify the 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 scope of what's being recorded, it's only within uh, the boundaries of the of the law.
If I may, uh, please keep in mind that this item will be going to the planning commission, uh, to the city council.
Absolutely.
So all of your concerns will be put in the report.
Mm-hmm.
Letting the council know the concerns that the commission have, that's, you know, discussed from the public as well. Um, putting speed bumps, reducing speeds or what have you. It requires traffic studies, traffic reporting, uh, there are certain protocol in order to comply with the standard, public safety standard and uh, street regulation standards as well. In order to warrant the installation of those, it's not as uh, easy as we all think.
Yeah, ab- absolutely not, and I think my sort of, and the reason why I sort of bring this up as far as recommendations just to the councils, you know, what if, you know, folks who are have, you know, the luxury of time to be here won't, aren't available when it's actually popped up on the agenda for them, so um, certainly, I think these are things that we can certainly talk about right now, if we feel comfortable approving this or at least a recommend, these resolutions, recommendation to the council. Um, I think this is still a really good opportunity to address um, some of the concerns that we've had originally and also the concerns of the community as well. Um, so with that in mind, yes.
I I think um, I would be comfortable as a commissioner to include those, you know, whether it's the speed bumps, the the lighting um, or the camera rather, and then um, the, what was the third one? Um,
Parking.
Parking, yes, yeah, with the cameras, I'm I'm a little, that doesn't bother me so much because everywhere you go now, there's a, there's a camera. And I'm sure, I mean, this, I'm sure the city is only going to have a camera in plain view, whatever's in plain view can be recorded at any time. So um, sometimes those cameras are actually a benefit, you know, if there, if there is a uh, you know, something illegal going on, then then they're able to identify, or they may be be able to identify um, the person, so the cameras, I'm not as concerned about the parking and the and the speed bumps, um, because again, if we're going to have children in that area and elderly people in that area, we do want them to be safe and
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. So. So what I was just discussing right now is just sort of the language that we would like to do, so certainly um, just the three items of concern are the speed bumps, the parking, as well as just sort of the cameras. Is there anything else that the commissions, comes or commissioners would like to go ahead and add? Seems like just a point of clarification, so um, when I want to say that I want to hear for this project along with the conditions, right? Sure, I'll actually make the motion. Great, thank you. Well, with that in mind, I'd like to make an emo- a motion to approve this project, um, but would like to add uh, the recommendations for council consideration for the following concerns, uh, which include the speed bumps, parking as well as cameras. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Chair Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Escobosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda De Zee?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, with that in mind, the planning commission, and bear with me all, uh, has voted to adopt the resolution number twenty five dash fifteen entitled A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Recommending Adoption of One, An Initial Study and Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program for the Anna Montenegro Park Project Located at APN eight five three six dash zero one six dash nine zero two. The adopt to adopt the resolution number uh, twenty five dash sixteen entitled A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Recommending The Approval of the General Plan Amendment Number uh, AGP twenty five dash zero one to change to the land use designation from commercial industrial to park space. To adopt resolution number twenty five dash seventeen entitled A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Recommending Approval Of the Zoning Code Amendment Number Z twenty five dash zero one to change the zoning designation from industrial commercial to open space. To also adopt the resolution number twenty five dash eighteen entitled A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Recommending Approval of Design Review for Number PR twenty five dash twenty five for the design of the park. Um, along with just the recommendations for consideration uh, to the council, the following concerns, speed bumps, parking as well as cameras. So we'll pass it on to the non-hearing items, I'm sorry, non-public hearing items.
I believe that, is that the reports of officers then, or?
Uh, yes, no, we can move on to the reports of officers now.
Okay, we do have one item under the reports of officers, that is the reorganization of the planning commission, it is that time again. Um, so with that, I think uh, most of y'all were here uh, for the last time we've done it. I I'll pass to you, uh, uh, Chair Pena to open it up to your colleagues uh, for a vote on a a new chair and a and a new vice chair.
Great, thank you. That's true. All right, well, we'll start off with the chairperson, I'll open it up for nominations and self-nominations are allowed.
I'd like to nominate Eric Pena for chair.
I respectfully decline. Like to nominate um, Commissioner De Zeeb.
I I will also decline, I feel like I'm still getting my feet wet.
Like to nominate Commissioner Escobosa.
I will accept.
Then on to, is there a second?
Second.
And then roll call, please.
Chair Pena?
Absolutely.
Uh, Commissioner Escobosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda De Zee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sure, on to um, nominations now for vice chair.
I'd like to recommend um, Commissioner Pena.
I decline, thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any self-nominations? Guys, I know I'm a Gemini, but I can't think like everything.
Oh. Commissioner De Zeeb, I know you're still getting your feet wet, but certainly I think this would be a really good opportunity for you to get your feet even wetter.
Not gonna be absent. I will be here as long as I sit in.
Yes, I will accept.
Great, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Chair Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Escobosa?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Miranda De Zee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, congratulations to you both, and of course, we look forward to your leadership, continued leadership. So we've uh, completed reports of officers as far as commission staff and uh, commission and staff communications.
Yes, I'm sure you've noticed, we have uh, two new faces here tonight before you. First, I would like to uh, introduce uh, Okina Dore, he's our new community development director.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here, um, I hear a lot of good, positive things about the commission and the team. Uh, I am the new community development director for the city of Baldwin Park. Uh, my first date here was June ninth, so I've been here a little bit over three months. Uh, attended the city council meeting and uh, very delightful community, I had the opportunity to be interviewed by the executive team. Saw how wonderful they were in terms of welcoming uh, welcoming me to Baldwin Park family. Uh, what's even uh, better was the council, how much embraced me of that and uh, invite me to the family as well. But what's most important that brings me here every single day that I look forward to come to Baldwin Park and working in the city is the staff, we have an amazing staff, a lot of support. As you are aware, community development consists of planning, building and safety, housing, building uh, as well as code enforcement and economic development. So the team itself just makes me want to come to work every single day. And it's just one of those feeling that is it's amazing that you're invited to part, be part of the family, but to uh, be embraced not just by the council, but by the staff and the community itself. Um, a little bit a- about myself, I've been in government for over twenty eight and a half years. And in local government, uh, my first city government was the city of Cerritos. Started as a young planner, then went to the city of Landale for about four and a half years after that. Then I came to the city of Artesia, where I was there for over twenty three years. And now I'm with the city of Baldwin Park. And uh, it's very exciting, there's a lot of exciting activities here. There's a lot of things to address and a lot of things to share. Um, I chose to work for a small city and small community for a reason. Because I want to make a change, I want to make an impact. Uh, provide the best quality of life for our residents in our community. Furthermore, uh, to provide the best quality customer service to our residents, developer and community. And you know, having an amazing team, working with the amazing team from all the different division, uh, it's just wonderful. Uh, our city is truly a one-stop shop. We have our own in-house land checker, building and safety, engineering, planning. And with very to no or minimal contracts that's outside. So our community can come in here, get their project expedited, move forward. And with that said, I also want to introduce our, my other counterpart. Our new planning staff, our planning assistant, Yudera. Uh, Yudera Hamana or Hamana, my apologies. Yudera graduated from Cal Poly, which um, as you may be aware, Cal Poly is a ranch that breeds planners. Um, I'm also a Cal Poly alumni itself, myself. Uh, not to be biased, but um Cal Poly, especially Pomona, is known for breeding amazing architects, amazing planners, uh, amazing designers that we see in everyday community. Uh, Yudera is actually a, a longtime Baldwin Park residence. Uh, I did not know that until she shared the information with me. She went to elementary school here at Birch Elementary School, Olive Middle School and Sarah Vista High School. So longtime residents, she has her degree in urban and regional planning with a bachelor's degree. And she used to work for a private consulting company as a head drafter for the company itself. So she has quite a bit of drafting background. She was interested in architecture first before she became a planner. Um, she used to work for the city of Azusa as a planning technician before she joined us here as an assistant planner. She also gained valuable experience and development services that brought her here. That's why she's one of the best candidate out of the selection. Um, it was a, a very uh competitive process, but thank you and congratulations, Yudera, for making in uh to join your team here. She has a a great level of customer service. Uh, I do encourage our residents and our community to visit city hall. Um, visit all the different department, learn the steps and process. You have any issues concerned, feel free to stop by. We don't want to be hysterical, this stereotype bureaucracy government. We want to be inviting. We're here to serve our community. There is no awkward question. Every question is a good question and we're here to hopefully provide you the best um service possible to the community itself. Um, Yudera also um have a, a meaningful understanding of the community that she really call home and she's very active. Uh, her spare time, she liked to spend time relaxing, being with the family. Um, and staying active with her church and the community activities. So uh, and she's also part within the church itself. She's part of the social media team. Get the the outreach out there. So we'll take advantage of her social media experience uh in our city as well. And then, of course, she love exploring uh nature and spending time watching comedy movies and shows. So that's just a little bit about Yudera, and I encourage all of our residents to come by city hall. Come speak to us. Ask any questions you uh you need to. We're trying to um, bring a different variety to our city. We have some amazing uh Mexican restaurant. Amazing cultural diversity in terms of other ethnic food and more to come. And uh forthcoming, you know, we will try to activate Sokolow Park. All the improvement that we put in and it's going to be a much more active area for to service our community, but not just to service our community, not just to service our residents. We want to also encourage our neighboring city residents to enjoy the city of Baldwin Park and to spend money in the city to generate more revenue for our city. Um, but more so that active space that will be forthcoming. Um, it will be a a communal effect that will benefit the community. We will be working with school districts, nonprofit to engage them to be inviting to uh to the, to that active space. So that will be coming soon. Um, I'm looking forward to presenting that to our city council and to utilize that area that's right now is underutilized. But once the activity is there, uh, we're going to have a destination point where when you come to the meeting, you could just walk outside, grab a bite, enjoy some food, enjoy the activity and enjoy the community itself. So I do want to thank you and thank everybody here for being present uh in the audience. Um, feel free to come by and see me if you need to, and I'm always approachable anytime.
Well, thank you so much for those introductions and we look forward to working with both of you and I'm sure there's a lot of area of growth we can work on together. Um, Nick, is there anybody else we'd like to introduce?
There is. Uh, I'm sure you've noticed our new city attorney. Uh, I'd like to introduce you to Christie Smith. She's with Jones Mayor, our our new law firm. Welcome, Christie.
Thank you so much. So the other staff communication that we have is we did receive some correspondence from the Baldwin Park Women's Club, uh, inviting the commission, the staff, and of course, the audience, or I shouldn't say the community. Um, this Saturday, September twenty seventh, um, there, the Saturday, September twenty seventh, there is going to be a summer party, the Magic Mardi Gras for twenty five dollars from four to seven P M. Enjoy the magic of the food, music and good times of Mardi Gras, wine service twenty one and over. Enjoy live musical entertainment with a great Southern Comfort and Crayle-inspired uh meal. There also will be souvenir photos included. So they are raising support funds to support our local charities. And of course, everyone's support is key. Um, please, if you have any questions, please contact Maureen Foster at nine five one six seven four eight four zero seven. We look forward to seeing all of you there. Um, great. Are there any additional staff communications? Okay. Great. So with that in mind, um, is there um a motion to approve, I'm sorry, excuse, to adjourn tonight's meeting? Um, I think that's all that in mind. Meeting has been adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night. I'm sorry, we've already adjourned the meeting. We can't have any questions during this time, but certainly we can address them after. We only ask, uh, can only have questions maybe during the, I wouldn't say even questions, just comments during the public hearing option. So certainly we'll still stick around with the staff to answer any questions. But as far as during the the meeting, we only have the um public hearing sections.
Right.
Thank you so much for understanding. Thank you so much, everybody, and good night.
Good night, everyone.